Hey, good evening, everyone. Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks, home of the University of North Dakota. This is Grand Forks City Council's Committee of the Whole from Monday, February 8th, under item one, called Order 1.1. Welcome and roll call.
Weigel.
Mr. Weigel. She's not here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Vean.
Here.
We have Quorum.
Excellent. Under item two, discussion items, 2.1 Legislative Update. Mr. Feeling, good evening.
Hey, Councilmember Sandy, thanks. And John Bernstrom's going to kind of follow me up. We did, we had an opportunity with team, our team Grand Forks partners to meet with several legislators over the weekend on Saturday, and I just wanted to provide the city council some updates. Our delegation is completely behind the gas tax increase for transportation funding, and I think right now that sits at, currently it sits at 23 cents. Right now, the bill calls for it to be at 29 cents, and previously it was at 27 cents. So there is a mood to increase the gas tax. And previously, I would say if it goes to 29 cents, it's about an $8 million ad for urban cities like Grand Forks. At the 27 cents, I think it was reported to be a $5 million, so we're X percent of that. So that's, that's good news, that hopefully that keeps going in the right direction. We should see some more urban funds come our way for transportation, and everyone was on board. There was some discussion on human services fund, funding, and, and this city council authorized the mayor to send off a, a letter to human services regarding some of their, their organizations that they help support. I think we did one on behalf of Prairie Harvest. It seems like there is some angst at the state level regarding human services funding, and specifically those nonprofits that they help fund. And so they're working through some of those things, but there was some discussion about how that's all going to shake out, and, and they're, they are getting some pushback at the state side about how they're going to keep some of the nonprofits moving forward. So more to come on that. There was a significant discussion regarding some of the federal stimulus that's going to come our way, in particular with the, this most recent bill that can pass it regarding Biden, is that the state is going to receive additional stimulus funding with not a lot of strings attached. And so there was a lot of discussion regarding where they would invest that one-time money. And so there was a lot of discussion regarding K-12 funding, there was a lot of discussion about career academies, career and technical workforce development, so I could see more coming out of that. And we know where our, the situation is with the school district, so I think if we want to move that forward, we're going to really have to kind of have to partner with our school district and, and the private sector to make that happen. But there may be some one-time funds coming throughout the state that the states kind of want to dedicate to workforce development. So that was, that was really a positive sign. I think the state's probably looking at using some of the federal dollars to fill some gaps that they have, so, just like North Dakota's always done, since we're an entity that receives more federal money than, than we give back on that. There was discussion, a lot of positive on the Hulte bill regarding Grand Forks leading that. That's really a bipartisan bill, and I think the positive side on the funding side, the state's going to set aside a, a state funding source, so that it's not going to be pushed back to a city, county, what have you. So there was a good discussion on that. Good discussion on Siren and 911, and hopefully we continue that project with our, our public safety folks. PERS funding, I think what we need to do in working with our human resource, I think we need to identify how important the, the PERS retirement is for all city employees and how it makes us more competitive. It's probably one of the most, one of the best assets we have for attracting and retaining employees, and I think we get, we have to have a better story on what it means to Grand Forks and other cities, and that we cost share with the employee and the employer. So right now, it's about 8% employee, 8% city of Grand Forks. I think we've got to get that message out more, and we'll do that much more in the coming years, or in the coming months here, because there is a serious discussion about whether we should move that forward. There was discussion on bonding, and we know that there's a lot of bonding bills. I think generally our delegation agreed that the priorities really are roads, bridges, and water, and we know that we really sit in this particular session in the, in the roads area. And so if you look at whether it's prairie dog funding, or whether it's the underpass at 42nd and Demers, I think that's the pot we're going to be looking at, but there were a lot of discussion that once it gets narrowed down, whether it's grants or low interest, long-term loan, those are going to be the three areas. The one note I talked about earlier on the federal stimulus, career and technical education is probably another priority they have, but they might look at other funding sources to move that forward, so as we move forward. With that, that's kind of was the overview, and a lot more to come. And as we've noted, you know, after halftime, we do go to Bismarck to have Grand Forks Day, and so we'll make sure we get all those dates and times, and we're going to be meeting with several of the state departments, so that if anyone wants to go, we'll get that, Spencer will get that out sooner or later, so you can put it on your calendar if you, if you want to go. The last thing I want to put in, and we put on this late today, it was from the city of Bismarck, but right now, OMB from, on the federal side is looking at redefining what a metropolitan area is. And so really, Bismarck was a concern, and I think we should be concerned, is if you're not over 100,000 people in your metro area, you'd be called a micropolitan area. And so we all want to be a metropolitan area as opposed to a smaller area. I did follow up with our city departments that receive significant federal funds, whether it's on public transportation, our metropolitan planning organization, those, that won't affect them on the funding side, but some of the concern is if they start to use this census track, you know, to how, if you're, if you're not at least 100,000, you're no longer a metropolitan area. I think that affects our psyche, if you will. The concern is they're going to take that definition in future years, then use that as a funding definition, and we certainly don't want that, because, because we're a metropolitan area, we do receive funding in various ways from our federal government that keeps a lot of systems going. So with that, that's kind of the essence of that. Bismarck has sent off a letter to say they didn't agree. They're concerned they're not going to be over 100,000, and if you look, if you just Google kind of where Bismarck is, they're at 120,000 estimate right now in 2020. We're at about 102,000 right now, so I don't, I think Bismarck's in less jeopardy than we are to, to be underneath that 100,000. We don't have the census data back, but we know during this pandemic, we're, we're all concerned about what the city's population will be, and what Grand Forks County and Polk County that makes up our metro area. So if there's no, no pushback, we'll, we'll probably send off a letter stating our concerns on that, that, you know, it's kind of the, this is the first thing, but there's more things coming, and these larger cities are going to try to gobble up more and more of the funding to get to the larger metro areas versus the smaller metro areas. So that was the overview on that. And then I think John was going to give an update on some of the bills that we're tracking this weekend next.
Thank you, Mr. Feeling. Mr. Bernstrom, good evening. Well, can we let the record show, Mr. Weigel is on, he just doesn't know how to work his mute button.
Let me start this update by apologizing. I just found out that I sent this legislative report to you guys on Friday, and you guys didn't receive it, so, working through that right now. So coming up this week, there's a couple of bills we're paying attention to, the Water Commission budget is being heard this week. We don't have any big asks this year, but we are a partner in the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, and there is $40 million as the Water Commission budget stands right now for municipal water projects. So we're paying attention to that one, that $40 million as of right now, we feel is, is pretty good, we want to make sure it stays in there. There's a couple that we have Marine working on this week. The budget timeline, if you remember a few sessions ago, they moved it up a few weeks. There's another bill to move it up by a month, so the preliminary budget would have to be done right around 4th of July. So there's, I know Marine is working on some testimony, there's just some timelines in there that just don't, they're, they're not very feasible. But so there's a bill coming up this week on that, that is House Bill 1367. House Bill 1379 is a state aid distribution bill. Right now, we receive state aid, and correct me if I'm wrong, Marine, but we get that quarterly?
Yes.
That is correct. It wouldn't be changing the dollar amount, but it would be changing, they would turn it from quarterly to monthly allocations, so you just, it's cash flow. So we would be in support of that bill. Mr. Gosted is working on, there's an eminent domain bill out there that has some penalties with some assumptions. Is that a fair, a fair description of that one, Mr. Gosted?
That's correct, yep.
So Mr. Gosted's working on testimony that would be in opposition to that, and, and how that would impact eminent domain for the city of Grand Forks. And then Becky Alt, this morning, provided testimony representing both the Grand Forks, City of Grand Forks and the 911 Association. There is a House concurrent resolution, 3028, that is urging Congress to have 911 dispatchers as first responders. That changes, that, that changes tax, taxing, many, many ramifications for that, we support that. She provided testimony, that actually came out of committee with a do pass, so that's now going to go on the House floor. And with that, if there are any other questions or any other comments from Mr. Weber and Mr. Vean, we'll leave it at that. I'll fix the email issue, so you can get the report this week.
Mr. Weber.
President Sandy, thank you. We're coming up on the eve of crossover, so we're, we're not seeing the introduction of new bills the way we had been over the last few weeks, so there aren't any new asks of council this week, but I'll throw one in nonetheless. I, I know that there are some renters' bills regarding rental laws that the council may want to consider. Those don't seem like they're going to gain traction this session, probably not past this session, but they might turn to study bills, and I'm wondering if there's an appetite from the council to consider those or to offer support for them at this time. One bill has to do with the fees that can be charged for renters. Right now, North Dakota is one of, I think we're the only state that has no law limiting the, the late fees that landlords can charge. And the other bill has to do with when fees are paid. Right now, if a renter has, you know, monthly rent of $700 a month, and they are fined $100 for missing garbage day or something, then that, that penalty fee, when they go to pay their rent the next month, that penalty fee is paid first, and so if they've paid their $700 a month rent, suddenly they find themselves in a situation where they are behind on their rent, even if they don't know about these fees that they've been assessed. So a couple bills that seek to find an even playing field for both renters and to preserve the businesses of our landlords, and I'm wondering if there's any appetite from the council to have further discussion or further information about that. Additionally, I'd like, if he's willing, Mr. Vean, to talk about the difference between whether the Red River Valley Water Supply Project is paid out of Water Commission dollars or if it's part of one of the bonding bills. And with that, I'll take any questions about renter, rental laws, or hand it over to Mr. Vean.
Any questions for Mr. Weber? Hearing on, Mr. Vean.
I think I'll just follow suit with the last item that, that Mr. Weber talked about, and that was funding for the Red River Valley Water Supply. It's great that it's in the Water Commission budget. I wish it was in the bonding bill where they were paying for Fargo flood control and, and my not flood control, but for whatever reason, that got taken out, and, but we appreciate funding, no matter which, which, where it comes from, it's just going to be inadequate for what we need.
Any questions for Mr. Vean?
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Bernstrom? Hearing none, thank you. Appreciate it. Moving right along, 2.2, hearing on application for abatement and settlement of taxes for properties, East Deck Unit A and East Deck Unit B. Mr. Hodak.
Thank you, Chairman Sandy and members of the committee. This abatement involves two parcels and three tax years, so it's Unit A, Unit B, those are separate condo parcels at 1451 44th Avenue South, and it, it is for 2018, 2019, and 2020 tax years. He had originally applied for 2018, on the last day you can apply. After I reviewed the application, I reviewed the listing, and I determined that I was going to be lowering the value. I asked him to also apply for 19 and 20, so that we could take care of it all at one time. So that's how that happened. My original values for 2018, 2019, and 2020 for Unit A were $8,200,000, and Unit B it was $8,322,400 in 18 and 19, and $8,74,400 in 2020. The applicant's asking that the Unit A be lowered to 3.7 million and Unit B be lowered to 4.3 million. With the application, I did get a copy of a contract for deed that I had not seen before, 2018 contract for deed, or he had sold the property to another party. In the interim, that sale has, has gone bad. He got the property back, and therefore he's, he's applying for these reductions now. He did give me a 2017 income and expense statement for both properties. I also wanted to note that the applicant did not submit any approaches to value. We had that conversation last month about tax reps and attorneys, and how many approaches to value that they supply to our department. It's important to note that this is a taxpayer, an owner of the property applying, and the standard is just different for an owner. I don't expect approaches to value from someone who's not doing this for a living, so he's given me all the information I asked for. I was able to take that information and come up with my recommendation. The reason for this reduction basically comes down to I'm relying heavily on the cost approach for this property. It was revalued in 2018 with our commercial reappraisal. I revalued it as a, it's a psychiatric hospital, I revalued it as a hospital occupancy. What comes with, you know, when you think about a hospital occupancy, you think about steel frame, multi floors, upgraded electrical, upgraded plumbing, oxygen distribution system, pneumatic conveyors for moving samples around the building. This subject property has none of those things, and I think it, it overestimated the value of the property by using the hospital occupancy. This is a one-story wood frame building with none of those extras that you would find in a hospital. So based on that, I would ask that you lower Unit B to 5,811,700, and, excuse me, Unit A to 5,811,700, and Unit B to 5,217,800. As I noted in my staff report, I have talked to the owner of the property, he does concur with my recommendations, and I would stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Hodak? Yes, Mr. Cavami.
By reclassifying it, is that the only item you took into consideration when revaluing it?
No, I'm, I'm just changing the occupancy is, I also, I did an income approach on the property, but in, the original income approach ended up to be too high, because my occupancy was inaccurate, so I did also reconfigure my income approach.
Any other questions for Mr. Hodak?
Move approval.
Move by Weigel?
Second.
Is there a second? Second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Yes, Mr. Hodak?
Thank you. Just one note, I will not be doing findings and conclusions on this. This is a taxpayer who wasn't represented by an attorney. We agree on the value conclusion, so next week it will be just, you'd be able to just stay on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly is helpful. 2.3 Electrical Franchise Fees, Mr. Feeling.
Council President Sandy, we're back again, and just want to give you some background. We had the overall presentation last week, we were trying to get in front of, we were trying to get in front of, we think that our economic development and projects that are moving forward in the electrical space, and, and certainly we're working on a large project on the, in the natural gas space, but we think we have that okay with the current franchise fee, so, and things are moving sooner rather than later, which is, which is good. So on this evening, I'm just going to give a brief overview. We've, I've been working with Marine and Dan Gosted, Marine's source said, Dan Gosted, Matt Marshall, on behalf of MinCota is going to come up here and speak on behalf of not only MinCota, but NODAC regarding what he's hearing behind the scenes on, on, on some important economic development projects. So what we're asking for as part of this, and I'm sorry, we just, I uploaded this staff report this afternoon as we were working with, we were working with MinCota and NODAC on some of the final figures as, as we move forward. So we'll, we'll step through those this evening, and I'll have Dan go through how we're going to amend these ordinances. So we are within both, the, I'm going to focus on the electrical, because we already have the natural gas agreement with XL already provides for the 2%. There's a step down after the 200, you know, their parameter goes down to three quarters, so we're trying to simulate that with the electrical franchise fee, so something not the same, but similar to how we're, we deal with natural gas, so that we can, we can build upon these large industrial users that we don't have currently in our, in our commercial base. As we move forward, I just highlighting, Mr. Marshall was here, and cities do this in our region differently, and so we're similar to Fargo and West Fargo, they do 2% on, on gas and electric. We do this similar, Bismarck, Bannon doesn't have any franchise fees. If they went out to the county, they wouldn't have any franchise fee. So we're trying to keep these entities in the city and provide competitive responses on the revenue side. We do, this revenue does go under the general fund, and you guys saw that last week with Marine, and that helps offset, it's, I shouldn't say, it's one of the revenue funds that go into our, our general fund that help pay for them to service our community. So then, we talked about the franchise fee itself. NODAC currently is about 390,000 for this 2020 fiscal year, and XL Energy's at 930,000, so you can see the proportionality. And certainly on the electrical side, NODAC has a certain area that we continue to grow in, and XL Energy, other than some infill development areas, is generally we're already in their area, and so they like the infill development project, because that adds more capacity into our system. On the gas side, as I stated, we already have some users that are taking advantage of that step down three quarters, and so you, if you look on the gas side, last year it was 268,000 as part of that 2%, and then if you look down on that three quarter cent, it's that 14,000, so you can see we already have users in that particular area. And so as we've talked to MinCota, XL Energy, and NODAC, we're trying to grow and diversify our economy into sectors that we don't have, you know, and the ones that we're really centered on right now are agri business, and the, the concern we really have more so on the electrical side are more the data and analytics. And the industries that we're looking at are, are much larger, they're, they're 10x plus what we already have in our community, so these are extraordinary power users from the electrical side that we do not currently have in our, our city of Grand Forks. Right now, we've kind of centered on, similar to what we do with XL Energy, we've set at 20 megawatts as a, as a standard, and when we looked up both on the XL side and the MinCota side, we don't have any users that are larger than the 15 megawatts. And if you look in the NODAC side, I would suspect the water, the new Grand Forks Water Tree Plant is probably the largest load, and yet we're at 1.5 megawatts. So you can see the users that we're looking at, if we set it at 20, that's probably the start of where we're looking at, and the ones that we're really focused on are, are well past where that 20 megawatts would be in particular. Both NODAC and XL are willing to take a look and, and adapt, and really it's in their self-interest to want to create as much business as possible. These fees are pass-throughs for them, so whatever we can do to make them more competitive here in Grand Forks and bring more business, they're, they're all for as we move forward. I'm going to ask, Mr. Gosted, we, we looked at an example of how we could shape this, and we probably didn't get it well enough across. It's very similar to a tax incentive, so whatever we bring in is less than we theoretically could get under 2%, but it's a lot more than we have ever, so it's really in a kind of more of a tax incentive. And as we talked to Mr. Marshall, if we don't do this, we're not going to get the large customer anyway, so we're trying to shape this so that we can actually attract them and be competitive. So with that, I'd ask Dan to kind of go over the, the math example.
Sure. Just so you're aware, the way the ordinance sets up right now for both XL and, and NODAC is that it's all based upon defined term of gross revenues, which is basically their revenues that they get from sale of electricity. There's exclusions for both of them, the University of North Dakota is excluded from gross revenues, and also some, you know, streetlights and those type of facilities.
streetlights and those type of facilities are excluded. So everything is based upon a gross revenue analysis. So what we'd, and there are really going to be two sections, or one section in each of the ordinances that would be changed to modify the calculation as to the franchise fee. There'd be some definitions that would be added as well, driving off the same language of gross revenues. The spreadsheet that I prepared sets out in mathematical formula how we derive at this, and it truly is going to be depicting a math problem in the ordinance. And I would envision not only putting it in verbiage and language, but also providing an example so that ten, fifteen years from now, you can see how the math gets calculated out. But what I did is I used in my spreadsheet, and I hope all of you have that, in the first page, it shows you what the, what the amount of the franchise fee would be using this reduced rate at point seven five percent once you reach, you're above that twenty megawatt threshold. The variables on here are going to be obviously the usage, the kilowatt per hour usage, which gets converted to megawatts. The average hours in the month, that's an average, it could, it's not going to go any higher than seven thirty, but it probably is going to go lower. For example, if they go off-peak, that number might be lower because of the number of hours that you're actually providing electricity. And then the power rate that's used in this spreadsheet is not intended to be what the power rate is going to be for these large users. It's for discussion purposes so you can see the comparison behind it. But again, it's just for discussion purposes. And so what will happen is, once you reach that twenty megawatt threshold, your franchise fee will go down to that point seven five percent based upon the amount of revenue that you get for that delta, that seventy-five megawatt if we're using, or excuse me, eighty megawatt if we're using the eighty threshold and a maximum of a hundred megawatts. And so my math calculation works out to about sixty-two thousand dollars on a monthly basis. The second spreadsheet then removes that point seven five percent allocation, and it shows you what the difference is. It just happens that when you use a hundred megawatts and you use that threshold of twenty, it's exactly, bifurcates the total amount, so the reduction is sixty-two thousand dollars from what you'd otherwise receive at a two percent rate. I looked at that, and I thought, geez, that seems kind of strange, so I actually proved it out and put in other megawatts, and it does, there is a difference. It's not fifty percent reduction all across the board. So it's going to take two readings of an ordinance. I would, I've already started working on the language, tested it against XL and Mincota have looked at the proposed language to make sure that they understand it because they're the ones that are ultimately going to have to do the math problem, and they seem to be satisfied with the language that I've put together. It'll get us to the right spot, and again, it'll take two, two readings, so next week and then the following week, which, or two weeks from then, March first would be the second reading.
And Council President Sandy, just, I think if you told the number, I mentioned three hundred and ninety thousand is the current Nodak franchise fee revenue on a given year, and so if we took Dan's step-down example, that average, that's about seven hundred and forty-four thousand, just for that one example. And so you can see what kind of large user that we're contemplating in this particular case. So now I would call on Mr. Marshall on behalf of Mincota and Nodak to kind of give us an update in his perspective. Thank you, Mr. Phelan.
Thank you, President Sandy and Council. I want to talk just a little bit about-
Mr., can you introduce yourself on the record, please?
Oh, my apologies. My name is Matt Marshall with Mincota Power.
Thank you.
I'm the economic developer over there. Again, I'd like to just reiterate a little bit, these guys did a great job of sort of summing up what we're trying to accomplish, but then just remind you a bit of the vision. Again, these are extraordinarily large potential users. We don't have them today. We're actively out trying to get them. And as we mentioned last week, you know, franchise fees are all over the roadmap, most notably right outside your border at zero. And so we've been in discussions with extraordinary users, and they've looked at us and said, well, why don't we just go over there? We don't have any. So they're at the rates, and that was really the impetus of where we approached the city and said, have you ever thought about this? We're not recommending going down to zero. We're not recommending going backward in any way, just an adjustment to try and round out that edge a little bit because Grand Forks has so much to offer above and beyond, just going out in the county. And so with that, I'm available for any questions. I, again, would remind you just of the vision. We're trying to get these large loads, and any help that you're willing to consider will make our jobs a lot easier on behalf of both of us.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Any questions for Mr. Marshall? Yeah, Mr. Cavani?
Mr. Marshall, just curious, is point seven five enough? Does that make us competitive?
I think it does. I think it's a start. Appreciate the question. You know, working for a city formally, you never want to jump right into the deep end right away. So my philosophy is, you know, and I'm a taxpayer here myself, live in the city, you know, incremental steps. And so, you know, let's try this, and let's see if we can get that momentum and generate this new revenue for the city and see what happens. Two years from now, maybe we readdress it as a group and say, you know, and, and at that point, maybe there's more evidence I can share to say, here's where we land compared to other communities or however you want to say it. But I think for this step, I, I think it's the right step in the right direction. I absolutely know there are, there are entities that are watching it to see what these decisions will be, and that impacts their decision on whether or not they'll take that next step forward. Not saying they'd be here wholly, but there are some, there are some people observing what happens tonight. So I think it's the right step forward. Yeah, thank you for asking.
And just curious too, if you look at Bismarck, do you know how long they've been at zero?
I do not know that. My sense is it's always been that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Why, why choose Grand Forks over Bismarck then?
We don't serve Bismarck? Oh, just as a general entity?
Yeah, right. Why would any major electrical user choose Grand Forks over Bismarck?
It boils down to a variety of things that you would see in other projects. So workforce availability, a lot of it has to do with electrical infrastructure available. I can't speak to what they have in Bismarck available. I know that they look at our general region and county because we have some electrical infrastructure up here, and we're headquartered here. I don't think that hurts either. Just gets us more attention than maybe in other, other parts. But once you get that attention, then it all goes down to math, and they have to make the, the plan or the business work just like any other project.
So why don't they just, why don't they, as you mentioned, locate three miles farther to the west?
They certainly could.
But why don't they?
We have not yet gotten a major user here.
Got it.
And so I think that possible-
You're trying to set the table today so that we don't have that issue in the future.
Correct, absolutely.
And that's, I see this as an economic development issue, setting us up so that we can be prepared for the next big user. I don't think, personally don't think a large electrical user can go out into Grand Forks County because there isn't any commercial property available, but that's totally irrelevant, in my opinion, in this issue. We want to set up the city of Grand Forks to be able to attract major electrical customers, which is why I'm supportive of what you're talking about. Any other?
Mr. Sandy?
Any other question?
Yeah, Mr. Weber?
I was skeptical when I first heard this last week, but since then, conversations with Mayor Bochensky and economic development leaders in the community, I only see upside for the taxpayers, and I'm supportive of this. I'll move approval.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Weber moves approval. Is there a second by Cavani? Thank you.
Mr. Sandy, I do have a question.
Yes?
I'm also supportive of this, but I was thinking, is there any benefit to a tiered approach based on usage? So we could reduce by three quarters of one percent, or would we go further if the user is using more, kind of like a Sam's Club effect or something along those lines? Is there any benefit to having that discussion?
Mr. Marshall, did you want to talk about it?
Thank you very much.
That's Mr. Weigel.
Thank you, Mr. Weigel. I do, I think when you get to the complexity of sort of managing the load and understanding right where it cuts off, city staff did a great job of providing perspective on their end and, and, you know, their auditing process, and then Nodak Electric did a fantastic job talking about the bill side. So I think maybe, again, that could be something in the future if this doesn't work, that maybe kits revisited, but at this point in time, having that clean break and easier audit process makes sense at this point in time. But thank you for the question.
Mr. Weigel, does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Okay, so any other comments or questions? Mr. Cavani?
One more, is the plan to review this annually, or is there a plan to review it?
I, when I was speaking generally about review is, you know, if we see some progress and can recruit some of these projects here, it's totally up to the council if you want to review it, but the idea is, let's get this going, get these projects here, and if it doesn't work, maybe we would come back and say, okay, would you consider something more aggressive? But at this point, get this locked in, let it play out, and if it doesn't work, then go back and review.
Excellent. Any other, yes, Ms. Mock?
I, I mean, I think I would like it reviewed at some point. I don't know if it would be better to see if this works, and if it doesn't, after a two-year mark, we automatically review, or if it does work and we start getting larger users that we then automatically review after two years of them being here, just to see if it's effective, but then also if it works once we maybe have those bigger users and the actual implications of it.
Yeah, I'm not sure how you draw that line, because if by next week we have seventeen major electrical users in town, we've obviously gone too far, right?
And I think that's the expectation, right?
Right. That's what my boss is asking me every day, will it be seventeen?
Great. Well, I would agree. Maybe, Mr. Phelan, we could try to revisit this in a couple of years, at a minimum, if we haven't already heard from the electrical companies, that we need to do more.
And Council President, I agree. Let's land the big first fish, and then hopefully there's many that engages, it's, I think, almost similar to the tax incentive projects where we went further than we've gone in the past on those incentives with the four, and maybe we have to keep doing that, just as so you're willing to adapt with us, knowing what we don't know, and, and as we kind of earn some projects, I'm sure they'll adapt and want more and more, if I would suspect.
Great. There's a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Appreciate you coming out today. Item two point four, the shop, the coveted shop local campaign.
Council President Sandy, we have Mark Schilt with Praxis Strategy is going to start after I get done speaking, then also you've got Grand Forks and Maggie Smith is going to discuss. So what we're asking for this evening, and one of the, part of the motion, if I could, if you're so inclined at the end to add this, is that we're proposing cares funding, but we would amend the cares funding to our special revenue fund, so we would take it from, currently the cares funding's in the general fund, we'd move it into a special revenue fund that would meet more of what we're trying to do with the local campaign. So that's what we would do as part of this. Mr. Gosted did look at, cities cannot give gifts, so we never, we always invest or we partner, we never give gifts to anyone. And so we did have this reviewed, and this, this program that we're promoting tonight does promote the public purpose and prosperity of our community, so that's what we're trying to do. Secondarily, it's supporting local business during an incredibly hard time of this COVID-19 pandemic, and so there is, there is a, there's a need for this in this specific small business arena. Finally, it is supporting a Knight Foundation grant of forty thousand dollars, and Maggie Smith will be here to talk about the program itself. But in advance, just to further put some context around why we would support this, I asked Mr. Schilt to kind of give us an updated vision of how our small business is doing in this sector, and he's got some updated economic development information that I wanted to share in advance of talking about the program. So with that, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Schilt. Good evening.
Thanks, President Sandy and members of the committee. Mr. Phelan, if I might, just a quick note, you had mentioned this potential change of the metropolitan statistical area rule from the federal government. If that is approved, Grand Forks definitely will not be a metropolitan area, neither will Bismarck. And the reason being is because the way the rule works is it's, the threshold is for an urbanized area within the metropolitan area, it must be above fifty thousand. So in the case currently, it's the city of Grand Forks, since it's roughly fifty-five thousand, that qualifies Grand Forks. Bismarck is about seventy-five thousand, that qualifies Bismarck. But they're looking at moving that rule of the urbanized area up to a hundred thousand, so neither one is close to that threshold. So I don't know if that changes the level of urgency about, providing some feedback to the, to the federal government about that or not, but I thought I'd mention that. So just real quickly, just a quick update with the latest information in December by sector locally. So here's the jobs numbers overall. You can see here, a rebound in July, sort of down about five, about five percent, but since then, really, it's been stable, not really an improvement, not really a drop. And so that leaves Grand Forks at about, down about five percent in total jobs year over year. So this is December to December. That's about middle of the pack across the region. You know, overall, average is down here, but that's because some of these bigger areas, Milwaukee, Minneapolis, are leading the way with job losses. But as we can see now, all of these places are negative. But across different sectors, it's not even. You can see retail is actually doing pretty well, up nine percent. Manufacturing continues to do well, up eight percent year over year, December to December. You see government down quite a bit, and of course, leisure and hospitality, that's restaurants, that's events, arts, and accommodation, hotels and such. So what's interesting, I think, is this government number, so this is the same chart, but just the number of jobs. And so you can see about thirteen hundred of these jobs are in government, and most of those are state government, so I take that to mean the university. So it says a lot about how the university's employment impacts this overall. So between the hospitality sector and government, those are the big declines. Retail is up about six hundred, manufacturing's up about six hundred in the last year. So here's the curve for retail. It looks pretty good. So it's back to roughly where it was in late twenty seventeen. Why that might be, I think it's because the type of retail that's left in the community is done pretty well in the pandemic. So this is across six states. You see, this is your Target, Walmart types of stores, food and beverage, department stores, grocery, and building materials, Lowe's, Menards, that sort of thing. So these are a lot of, I think, was driving retail gains in the community. Now, that doesn't say anything about the smaller shops, and they may be much worse off. And you can see, of course, down here, the hospitality sector is down quite a bit. And so again, retail, Grand Forks is leading the way across the region, third best. Here's your leisure and hospitality. So this looks more like the overall, where it came back in July, but now it's down a little bit, so it's declining, maybe following a slow drop over time. So, but I think the takeaway here is it hasn't gotten better in the last six months. Here's food and drinks. So this is most of that sector, which may be our restaurants and bars. Again, it hasn't really improved, so down about a thousand jobs or so, twenty percent. One reason that might be is it seems that Grand Forks County residents are still continuing to stay home. So this line here is pre-pandemic, this black line. So here's people staying at home, that's up about ten percent as compared to prior to the pandemic, and this is foot trafficking to retail and restaurants and such businesses. That's down about twenty percent. So that's remained pretty stable since that last outbreak in the middle of November here. So Grand Forks looks, it's, again, middle of the pack, better than a lot of places, better than the regional average, but a lot of that's because you see forty percent decline in the twin cities. Overall, you know, looking to the future, I think it's reasonable to think that this is going to continue. You know, just looking at some other data from across the country, open table reservations and TSA air passengers, they're down, still down forty percent, and that's leveled off. There's a lot of poll data nationally that suggests people, there's a decent amount of people that still are not comfortable, and then there's a strong majority of people that are really concerned about their local businesses. This is national again, but eighty percent are worried about restaurants going out of businesses. Two-thirds said they would support restaurants increasing prices. So again, you know, we're down five percent, and it's not, it hasn't really gotten better. A big thing to point out here is the university jobs going down. Retail is up, but I think a lot of that's the super centers, the grocery and home improvement, and it may not extend to local shops. Hospitality is down twenty percent, and I think if anything, here's the takeaway for today, is that this, it's just not improving. It's- It's came back in July, but it's been sitting at that negative 20% for a while. Part of that's probably because people are respecting the virus still. Foot traffic is down, and I don't, you know, there's a lot of reason to think that that mentality will probably continue for at least a few months. So with that, that's all I've got. Happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Schill? There's some good news in there.
Yeah.
Mr. Phelan?
Yeah, Council President Sandy, members of the city council. As Council President and I were talking earlier, it's been announced that one positive, I think, for hospitality industry is that it was announced that the Ralph Engels Ten Arena will be the host to the post-playoff series. And I think that'll be a big deal, and they'll be here for several days. And so as part of that request, we also went forward in partnering with the Ralph Engels Ten Arena on the, the initial part of the series that went to Omaha with this intent. And so the city of Grand Forks did make a commitment, if they did get that, that we did have, we have 250,000 set aside in a, we'll call it a festival type of fund. And so I would anticipate as part of the Ralph receiving this tournament, that they have asked if the city could help partner on the funding. So I want to say, I think it's a big deal for those numbers and filling beds and bars and restaurants. And I would anticipate a request coming to the city council for that particular event, too. So with that, I'd ask Maggie to come forward.
Hello. I'm Maggie Smith, Executive Director of Evolve Grand Forks. And the Knight Foundation has partnered through the community foundation to grant $40,000 to offset and relieve the effects of the COVID-19 virus on businesses in this area. And so I devised with my committee some goals and objectives for this, as well as making sure that we're really stewarding our local businesses. So with the money, we're hoping to get a match from the city, since this is, I think, the first time the Knight Foundation's granted such a large sum. And we're looking to reinvest back into our community and bolster consumerism. And as we could see, like, the trends are not looking great. So we've come up with a program in order to incentivize people to get back out in the community and use their funds through a gift card program in the packet you guys should have received. So with that, people feel ability to take their money and fully expend it in a way that isn't a fun and a vehicle way to get it out in the community. So my goal was to wrap in as many vendors into this campaign as possible, to really take the money that we've gotten and make sure we're using it effectively, instead of just putting it into a single vendor. My hope is that we can have the different agencies that are advertising with us, to be able to spotlight their abilities to the community, which might drive more business to them, and also to passively promote through their networks this campaign to get more consensus into it. So with that, I'm looking to incentivize, encourage, and educate consumers on what small business and local businesses. A lot of people think Target and Starbucks is in this community because it's local, but that doesn't necessarily mean it is a local business. So part of the campaign will be to push and say, hey, we can point to the owner of that business, and we can say that they're local, and we are going to celebrate and champion for them. So with that, we've broken down the cost to really effectively reach out through many modalities of advertising to hit all the demographics, but most specifically, the younger ones, since we tend to be on our phones more, and we shop online. So we want to make sure we have the best exposure and awareness across those platforms. So as you can see, maybe, I don't know if people can see this slide, but our goal is to have a highly visible campaign. We really want to make sure that we're impacting local businesses quickly and effectively with a fast turnaround time. So we're looking at March 1st as being the hard launch. Right now, I'm meeting with the vendors and signing contracts in order to get the fastest turnaround to get this project and campaign lifted. And we're really making sure that we're going to educate people on what buying local is. So we're seeking your approval for a matching grant of the 40,000 from the Knight Foundation.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any questions about the program?
Senator Sandy, you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Weigle.
Maybe, maybe not so much a question, but just, just a couple of quick comments. I think it's great that the, that this is before the city. I think we've got some work to do with our local businesses. It's great to see that the Knight Foundation has already come together with some, with some initial funding, and hopefully that can help sustain the campaign moving forward and, and helping support some of our local businesses. With that said, I'll, I'll move approval.
I'll second. Mr. Weigle moves approval, and Mr. Weber seconds. Any other questions? Mr. Cavami?
Yeah, I just wanted to see if you could explain the bonus bucks. What is that?
Sure. Okay. Let's see if this queues up. So can you see this on the screen? Okay. There it is over there. So if you can see where it says buy $30, get $10. So our hope is that some of the money from the Knight Foundation, and possibly some of the money from the city, can be used to incentivize people to buy gift cards. So the plan is, you know, when you get Kohl's cash, you get like $10 back, and you go in and you're like, oh, well, I already have $10, I can spend more, because essentially, you viewed yourself as already coming in with a plan to spend more. So that is the plan with the bonus bucks. You come in, somebody buys you a gift of $30, and then you're like, I get rewarded for spending $30. So I'm going to take that $10, and I'm going to go to the participating merchants and utilize that, and maybe probably spend more than what you've earned.
And, and who's responsible for creating that structure, and is it equal across all vendors?
Yes. It is already, it's a prepackaged program. So it comes with the website, the transaction portal, the ability to purchase the gift card electronically through text or email. And it is fair to any local vendor. So we go, we advertise to them and try to get them to participate. They can opt out if they don't want to. One question that came up previously was, what about large retailers that aren't local here? And frequently, they are buffered out because they have their own gift card system, which conflicts typically with this. So it doesn't incentivize them to be part of it, which is kind of convenient. So any local merchant is able to participate.
Thank you.
Sure.
So are they like Visa gift cards, sort of thing?
It's a MasterCard, yeah.
Okay, great. Ms. Mock?
So how do you actually decide what is a local business?
So my hope is that we can point to them and say, I know that person, they are a local business owner. And that helps us showcase the skills and abilities and the gems in our own backyard, because ultimately, that's what this campaign is for.
So do you have a list of every business, and you're going to personally approach all of them, or?
Yes, I'm going to go through networks of the Chamber of Commerce, the Visitor Center, the Downtown Development Association, my personal networks, the networks of all the entities that are part of the stakeholders of the Grand Forks entrepreneurial ecosystem.
So then, you're the decider of what is local or what is not?
No, so I have a committee, and everyone is free to sign up. And if they are a person that's a publicly traded entity, we may approach them and say, you know, this is not necessarily maybe in your best interest, we're looking for local, because we want to support our local businesses.
Okay. So then, it looked like there was a budget of 40,000 that was attached to this. So that is what the Knight Foundation money is going towards? And then what is the City of Grand Forks money going towards? And I guess I'd also ask what account it's coming from, Mr. Phelan, if you know?
So it's going to continue and extend the campaign, either in terms of the bonus buys, or continue the marketing and advertising through the different channels?
Council Vice President Mock, we're proposing to use some of our cares contingency funds. And as you recall, last week, Marine Stores had, I'll let you know that, we have 1.2 million plus right now in that, in that. And so we thought that would be the area where things would pop up, whether it's small business related, city related. And we think that's the best, those are funds that are eligible for this. It's helping our small business during the COVID time. And that's what we're requesting as a funding source.
Okay. So then, I guess that budget seemed extremely heavy on overhead and marketing, and not as heavy on gift cards and the bonus bucks. So I guess I would like to see, I guess, the city's money used for more direct relief for businesses, and not as much overhead?
So the Knight Foundation money is going to strictly advertising with a small allotment for the bonus bucks. The Knight Foundation is making sure that that is a marketing campaign to push it. And then the other part is going to really incentivize people to buy it. The money for, the consumers buy the gift card, and there is a fee to purchase it to be part of this campaign. And so the onus is put on the consumer to buy the gift card. And the money that is coming from the city would be going to incentivize buyers to continue buying it, and also to drive some of the marketing campaign part.
So our city money wouldn't be going towards the gift cards?
No. The consumers are buying the gift cards. They're just blank cards. So it comes across electronically.
I think what she's getting at is, I spend $75, the city will match $25 on that, so I'll get $100 cards. So the 40,000 plus, I think it was 6,000 or 7,000 from the Knight Foundation, will all make up that, the delta, the difference, which is the incentive to get me and you and everyone else to go out and buy the cards.
And then the rest of the marketing, the point is to get people to be purchasing these gift cards.
Correct.
We don't want a finite campaign, because this is not a finite issue. We want a long-term, sustainable solution. That way, we can keep driving this. So that's why the gift cards with the advertising and the support of the city will help continue this. West Fargo's doing something similar, but there's ends on March 31st. So we don't want to put an end date on when we want to support our local businesses. We want to continue.
That, not only that, but West Fargo is doing a direct mailer of gift cards that the city is paying for 100%, and are handing them out to all of their residents, right? Which is great. The City of Grand Forks can do the same. Everybody gets $25 gift card. Difference is, I get an incentive of $25 from the city, but I actually have to put in some skin as well. So we actually are getting one and a half times more benefit for the local businesses, because I'm putting in personal money as well as the city's money. I, I think the concept in the programs is excellent, the way it's put together.
They've had really good success rates. They typically show that there's about 90 to 93% redemption rate over a 12-month period. So that's good, because we're capturing then the holidays and different birthdays and special occasions for people. Just want to make sure that, like, it goes on, so that way people can really keep supporting and driving this shopping local, and making it special to this community.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Smith, thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck with the program. We'd love an update at some point.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
And 2.5, civil service commission appointment. Ms. Bovette?
Good evening, Council President Sandy and members of the committee. I'm here just to ask that the committee approve the appointment for two civil service commission replacements. The first is Commissioner Saboda, who has served with us for one term, and we ask that you reappoint her. And the second is a reappointment for Gregory LaHaze. Any questions? I can answer them now.
Any comments or questions? Move approval? Mr. Cavami moves. Is there a second? Second by Mock. Any other? Yeah, Mr. Bacinski?
Just really excited. Mr. LaHaze was a lieutenant for the PD. He's going to be a great asset on there. And Ms. Saboda is, you know, getting closer to retirement and have more time to put into it. So really two great candidates. Pretty excited.
Any other comments? Yeah, Mr. Veen?
I would just say, I know Barbara Saboda, I know the other individual.
I know Mr. LaHaze from his time on the PD. He's a very, very nice person, and works very hard, very committed to our community. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Ms. Bovette. Item 2.6, budget amendment, Health Department, County Cares Funding for the School Nurse Program. Ms. Swanson, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the city council. You have before you a budget amendment, which represents funding that the Health Department did receive last year. This simply is a carryover into this year. We have recently hired the school nurses for the county schools, the four county schools, and they will begin this month. And so we're really excited about that opportunity. The funding will extend through the end of the year. The budget amendment is on the second and third pages of the document, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any comments or questions? I have a quick question. So is this just the delta for the additional time? Is the funding amendment just to pay the additional time, or is that for the whole year?
It's for the entire year.
Great. Any, is there a motion? Moved by Mock, second by Cavami. Do you have a comment, Mr. Cavami? No. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And 2.7, plans and specs for projects 8315, 8316, 8317, and 8318, district number 580, 351, 581, and 756. Quarry's 11th, sanitary sewer, water main, storm, paving, and street lighting. Mr. Lieberman, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, President Sandy and committee members. This project installs pavement and underground utilities in the recently platted Quarry's 11th addition development. It also constructs, in addition, onto Cherry Street, south to 62nd Avenue. You may recall this, these projects met the council back on January 19th, where the council approved the engineers' reports and created special assessment districts. Since then, we have met with the Special Assessment Commission. We have also completed the plans and specifications for this project. As it currently stands, the construction, the estimated construction cost is $3.1 million, of which the city's share is $720,000. That is the city's share, the 80/20 split on Cherry Street pavements, and a cost for upsizing the water main along Cherry Street, in accordance with our policies. The city's share would be funded from Fund 4815 Streets and Infrastructure, where it is budgeted for this year. With that, we are requesting approval of plans and specifications, and I would be glad to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Lieberman? Is there a motion? Moved by Mock, second by Cavami. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Item 2.8, plans and specs for Project 8274, 75, and 76, 2021 sanitary water main, storm, sewer repairs. Mr. Lieberman, again.
Thank you. This is our, these three projects represent an annual contract that we have to do emergency repairs and some routine maintenance on storm sewer, water main, and sanitary sewer systems. Typically, we spend around $300,000 each year in this type of work, and that is our target this year as well for this contract. These would be bid together as one contract and funded from Fund 5200 wastewater, 5300 water, and 5400 stormwater, where there is budget allocated for this type of work. With that, we request approval of plans and specifications and direction to, for engineering to advertise for bids for these projects.
Any move by Weber? Second by Veen. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Excellent. Item 2.9, award bid for Project 8214, 8260, 8261, district number 751, 579, and 350, paving box culvert water main on 44th Avenue South from 17th Street to east side of South End Drainway. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you again. These projects, you may recall, install a box culvert, paving, and water main across the South End Drainway. This supports the new Edgewood development, Edgewood Village development. This was authorized for, plans and specifications were approved and authorized for bid on January 4th. Since then, we have had a bid opening on January 28th, where we received a total of eight bids. Seven of those bids were accepted, one was non-responsive. The low bid was submitted by RJ Zavro and Sons for the amount of $609,983.65. This is 18% beneath the engineer's estimate, so we're very pleased with the bids we received. I would like to note that back on January 1st, the engineering department went to a complete virtual bidding process. Historically, we had paper bids, and we went completely virtual. And this was the first project, or first contract, that we have used that virtual process. And we have been very impressed with not only the number of bids, the quality of the bids, and how smooth the process was. So I would like to call out one of our team members, Ms. Tammy Woodstrom. She's a senior- She's a senior administrative specialist and she's put in a lot of work to making the Quest online bidding work for the City of Grand Forks Engineering and I really want to give her some kudos for that work. So with this, engineering is requesting award of the contract to the low bidder, RJ Zaverell &amp; Sons, in the amount mentioned previously.
Mr. Veen? Well, with this new process, does it eliminate that problem of trying to read people's writings on the bid and adding mistakes and all of those other things that somehow get in when people are making last minute changes to their bid documents?
It does. Previously, individuals would enter their price per unit quantity. They would have to do the math and make sure it all works out correctly. In this process, they log into the Quest website. We have already preloaded the bid items, the unit of measure, and they simply enter their price for that unit of measure and it does all the math, so eliminates the potential for math errors.
Did we write the software or was that something that we?
No, this is a commercial, the company's name is Quest Construction Data Network and they're a pretty nationwide company that does this type of bidding for construction projects.
How does it handle bid bonds and contractor's license?
So as part of the submission of the bid, the contractor not only enters their quantities, but they upload a copy of their license, they upload a copy of their bid bond, a signed noncollusion statement, and that is certified. They have a login and a password, so we know that it came from their company and they're a specific individual. So the electronic signature is validated through that method.
Yeah, I mean, the system sounds very, like it's going to work. Is it going to be more of a standard as you go forward or just on some projects?
I think that's our intent. We were a little, we had a little bit of trepidation about going from paper to electronic, but it's turned out to be very smooth and I think that would become our standard going forward.
So I'd move approval. Great, thank you, Mr. Veen. There's a motion by Veen. Is there a second? Second by Cavani. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And certainly, a big thank you to Ms. Woodstrom for helping with all that extra effort. Item 210, Award Bid for Project 8278 and 8279, 2021 Sidewalks, Contract Number One, and 2021 ADA Curb Rams. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you. This is one of our two annual sidewalk contracts. It was recently put out for bid. We received bids on, a single bid on February 1st in the amount of $298,055 by Tony Anderson Construction. This bid is roughly one-half of a percent above the engineer's estimate, so we're pleased with that bid amount. With that, we are recommending award to Tony Anderson Construction in the amounts previously listed.
Mr. Lieberman, I have a question. How come Tony Anderson always wins the sidewalk bid every year? Why is that?
By the definition of the rules, he's the lowest qualified bidder.
I understand that, but well, how is it that somebody, never somebody else accidentally bids lower than him?
I couldn't answer that.
Great, okay. Is there a?
Move.
Moved by Veen, second by Mauch. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 211, Award Bid for Project 8328, 2021 Sidewalks, Contract Number Two. Let me guess, Tony Anderson?
Thank you, President Sandy. You are correct. We received one bid on February 1st by Tony Anderson Construction in the amount of $138,725. This is approximately 2% under the engineer's estimate. Per your previous comment, we do encourage more competition. I think given the number of, the size of the pool of contractors and the nature of this work, we historically don't receive many bids for this type of job.
Great. Well, so there perhaps is an opportunity for an entrepreneur.
I agree.
Any comments or thoughts? Moved by Cavani, second by Veen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 212, Award Bid for Project 8048, Paving Reconstruction of South Third Street from University to Demers. Mr. Greco, good evening.
Good evening, Council President Sandy and members of the committee. This project includes reconstruction of North Third Street downtown here from Demers to University Avenue. This is going to be very similar to the reconstruction that occurred on Demers Avenue, so you're going to be looking at decorative pavers, bike parking, benches, flower beds, as well as foundations for decorative lighting, those light pillars that we've been discussing on Demers Avenue. Overall, the bids were opened on Friday last week. The bids range from approximately $3.1 million to $3.6 million. The engineer's estimate for this project was approximately $3.5 million. So the lowest bid came in about 13% under the engineer's estimate. The low bid on this one was op. construction and we've got about $2.44 million in federal funding associated with this project through the competitive grant program. That's the urban grant program, which was the downtown program. Staff is recommending awarding the contract to op. construction in the amount of $3,086,548.95 and approve any necessary budget amendment for the city project and contingent upon concurrence by the DOT.
I move approval. Moved by Weber. Mr. Veen, do you have a comment? I have a comment. Wait, hold. Oh, second. Second by Veen. And a comment? So I know this is replacing the sidewalk and curb and gutter from face to building to face to building. Is it phased in on a block-by-block basis or how is the construction implementation?
If memory serves on this one, I believe the project is phased where the roadway pavement gets completed in one phase and then the sidewalk paving is split into two different phases. That way then, the construction will be completed as quickly as possible, get traffic moving through the area while still allowing for access to the businesses and apartments and housing that is in that area as well. So the idea in keeping to as few phases as possible is to make sure the project is done as quickly as possible to minimize the disturbances.
Is underground utilities being replaced like storm sewer?
I believe in this case, there may be some adjustments to the catch basins, but I do not believe any major utility work is taking place with this project.
Great. Any other questions? Good questions. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Last, on the discussion items, Item 213, Reallocation Award of Federal Transportation Alternative Funds for City Project Number 8349, Shared Use Path on 32nd Avenue South from Heartland Drive to South 48th Street. Mr. Greco?
Thank you. This project goes back quite a ways. We originally, the City Council approved submitting a request for federal funding for this project back in November of 2019. Summer of 2020, we ended up receiving word from the DOT that this project was not selected for federal funding. However, it was selected as an alternative in case additional funding became available. As the council may remember, recently, we ended up indefinitely tabling a federally-funded TA project over on University Avenue and foregoing those federal funds associated with that project. In turn, the DOT has contacted us again saying that there is additional funding available for a project we previously submitted for over on 32nd Avenue. And that project would include federal funding of approximately $236,000 for construction only at an 80-20 share. And staff is recommending authorizing staff to accept the funding and approve any necessary budget amendments and proceed with project development for shared use path on 32nd from approximately Heartland Drive over to South 48th Street.
Any comments or questions?
I'll move approval.
Moved by Weigle, second by Veen. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, David. Under information items, Item 3.1, COVID-19 Update.
Council President Sandy, our intent on the call is just to put the information out there and be available for any Q and A.
Great. Anybody have any questions related to the dashboard that was, and information provided? Yes, Mr. Veen? Just a question. For the vaccine to be, you have to be on my chart, is that right?
President Sandy, members of the committee, and Mr. Veen. Altru Health System is assisting Grand Forks Public Health Department through a partnership to administer vaccine in our community. And in that partnership, Altru has taken on the responsibility of the hotline and registering patients for vaccinations. While they may call the hotline and request an appointment, the type of appointment that they will make is kind of a shell of the MyChart system that exists in Epic. So it's not the full-blown Epic or MyChart. And any person is able to make an appointment. They do not have to be a patient of Altru Health System to make an appointment through that process.
Okay. So you don't have to be on my chart to make that appointment?
No, you do not. It is one tool that they are using to facilitate appointments so that people are notified of it if they are of the appropriate age and health condition, but it is only one tool that is being used. The hotline is the other.
The other one. And so do you get a, some type of response back that know, that identify that you've been registered?
Yes, that is supposed to be how it works, is that you're notified. And if you do not have internet access or are not familiar with how to do that, the hotline personnel will walk the person through it and verbally give them an appointment time.
Very good. Thank you. Yeah, I'd comment that my mother was vaccinated about a week ago and she said it was very easy in and out, so she was very appreciative of what public health did for her.
I could also mention today, if you haven't looked at the dashboard, for North Dakota, the vaccine dashboard, it does show that North Dakota has given about 96% of the vaccines that have arrived in our state, so they're, we're being very efficient about that. And in Grand Forks County, 13,500 vaccinations have been administered. That's a combination of first and second doses.
That's excellent. Thank you. And thank you to all the other public health workers and Altru, of course. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Anything else for the good of the order? There a motion to adjourn? By Cavani, second by Veen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. We're adjourned.
Thank you.[1741.63]